This program is sponsored by Medical Arts Hearing Instruments, 52 West Street in Leominster, locally and authentically providing better hearing and quality of life since 1978.
Who puts the parking ban on? Even though the ordinance doesn't name somebody, he's designated me to put the parking ban on. And I'm not a meteorologist, so when the weather forecast start coming out about snowstorms, believe it or not, I lose sleep because do I put it on, do I not put it on? Do I put it on, do I not put it on? As it gets closer, and I don't do the 48 hours, I think everybody here realizes it's probably more like 36 hours. And I end up having a text conversation usually with the DPW director and with the mayor. And we err on the side of caution to put the parking ban on to keep the streets clear. And we miss sometimes, and a lot of people get a lot of tickets. And I know there's a lot of conversation about, you know, can the officers use common sense? But again, I can't use, I can't leave it, I think I discussed this before, I can't leave it discretionary, can't decide when to enforce an ordinance and when not to enforce an ordinance. We are always right if we just follow the rules, okay? And it's much easier to just follow the rules. This attempt was to change it from a parking ban to a snow emergency. This essentially is Fitchburg's snow emergency that was tailored a little bit for Leominster. I did research it to find out that in Massachusetts, there's a lot to do the whole winter ban like we used to, and there's a lot to just do the snow emergency ban. And I decided, rather than go back to the past, that I would put a petition in to put a snow emergency ban in that had a little bit narrower window and the ability to lift it when you wanted to, okay? Which I think is more fair to the public. There was never provision in the previous ordinances to notify the public. Did that out of courtesy, okay? I put it in here so that somebody who, I don't know, didn't feel like doing it, different mayor, different police chief, different DPW director, would have to abide by an ordinance to say you have to try and notify the public that you're putting the emergency ban on. The part about towing simply was to simply clarify it. We could always tow for inhibiting snow removal, that ordinance is still on the books. So we can always tow for that. I just wanted to put it in the same ordinance so that 99% of the time when we announce the ban and we put it on our social media accounts, we put the ordinance on there so that people understand what it is. This way, it's all on one page. I think that the 48 hours before is not appropriate. I think that six hours is a lot better. I had this conversation with the mayor. The most accurate forecast of what's going to happen comes about six hours before the event, so that you're pretty sure within six or seven hours of the event what you're going to get, and then you can put the ban in place. I mean, I suggest it would probably go on before that, probably 10 to 12 hours before that. But I just think it's better. I've got to be perfectly honest with you too, I'm not married to this. If you want to leave it the way it is, I don't have a problem with it. But with all due respect, if you ask me to tell the officers to use common sense, I'm going to tell you, no, I'm not going to do that. It just creates, it creates all kinds of complexity for the police department to leave it to individual officers or individual supervisors, whether to enforce or not, even to me, whether to enforce or not. Because if you're wrong, I get way more complaints about cars that we didn't get off the road, and now you've got this big ice block narrowing your street until it warms up, than I get about the parking tickets either being written or not, and I get way more complaints. And, you know, I'm sure everybody in the council knows, we do the best we can. The midnight shift generally runs with five people, and they get sent out to do parking tickets by their lieutenant or their sergeants, and halfway through doing the parking tickets, they get called to a domestic or something like that, and they never get back to finishing the street. They try their best. This, the one hour thing is very problematic too, because then again, you're tying up an officer's time to, so what you're supposed to do is after midnight, do your beat. And this is what I did back in 1988. You do your beat, you take a little sheet of paper, usually on a clipboard, and you notate the streets and how many cars. And an hour, an hour and 10 minutes later, you go back down the same street. The car's there, you tag them. Because under the old ordinance, they could be on there, and even on this one, or the current one, they can be on the street for less than an hour, okay? That just ties the officer up continuously going back to the street. Snow emergency, I feel, is just cleaner, just cleaner and neater.
So, thank you. So typically speaking, from 2:00 AM to 6:00 AM, cars, when there is no snow emergency, will not be tagged if they're traditionally parked on the side of the road?
Correct. No, we would eliminate the tagging.
Alright, so that's important.
Right. Unless there's a snow ban in place, a snow emergency in place, there'll be no tagging.
Right.
Park on the streets.
And you're looking at, in a really good scenario, six hours, but it could be anywhere from 10 to 12 hours before, if we know there's a no-rease to come in.
If you've got an oh-my-god storm coming, and all their 47 different, you know, computer models show that we're going to get five, six, seven, and up, then you would be, try and be fair and put it up earlier so that everybody knows.
Right. And where are we post-storm? It stops snowing at 6:00 in the morning, how many hours before the residents can put their cars back on the street from that angle?
Well, you can, the petition, the way I wrote it, says the mayor or his designee can do it at any time. You can begin parking them on the street, and that would go out to the officers.
Okay.
You know, Ward 3's done, Ward 2's done, Ward 1's done. I would suggest that, I think that's the way it would work, I don't want to...
Yeah, no, it makes sense.
Yeah. And again, I just think it's cleaner.
Okay. So specifically on the ordinance, well, I'm going to start to my left over here, does anyone wish to speak, Dave? Councilor Cormier?
I really don't have anything to say other than the fact that, you know, I definitely want to support you because I want to make sure that we're clear. Certainly, I was getting a lot of complaints about, you know, parking tickets in late December before we changed the ordinance, you know, and it was a very mild December. And then you have instances where you can have a blockbuster of a storm in April, but if your, our ordinance said April 1st, it was done, so you know, you're sort of on the flip side of things. You have a warm December and a cold April, and the snow ban never made sense. And, you know, I mentioned at the last meeting that I certainly don't want to go and change this ordinance every two or three years. It could create a lot of confusion to the public as to what they're actually supposed to do, and I just wanted a better understanding from you as to what we're going to gain, you know, with this new ordinance.
I think it's fair, more fair, that's what I think it is.
Yeah.
It's more fair to the public.
And so, you know, if that's, if that's the case, and you feel that we've, you know, finally captured everything here with this new ordinance, and, you know, you can, you can make things easier for cleanup, but you can also be, you know, cognizant of a fact that we live in a city and not everybody has off-street parking, and some people need to park on the street, you know, we can find that happy medium, I think, with this ordinance.
French Hill was definitely in my mind.
Right. And that's probably more of a would, this is probably more of a would-two problem than anything.
Oh, I think so, for sure.
Right. But I'm comfortable with it, you know, if you feel that this will, you know, sort of be what we can follow for many, many years to come.
I think it's, I think other than going with an odd-even side street, which is not what I think the city wants, I think this is the next best option. I think, again, I keep repeating myself, I think it's cleaner than the current ordinance and the old ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Pauline Cormier?
Chief, I just want to thank you for your efforts, and I've read it over, and I do agree, this is going to make it cleaner, it's going to make it easier, and Ward 2 thanks you.
Well, Ward 2, you know, any part of the city that has multifamilies, as we all know, insufficient parking, because when they were built, one family was lucky to have one car. Now I think it's a police rule or a law that you have to have a car when you get your license. You know, so we just, it's brutal.
Kind of guilty of that, so...
All set, counselor?
Yes.
Thank you. Counselor Ottinger?
Nothing really. It's a good ordinance, thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Bonanza?
You know, obviously, it's less restrictive than the existing ordinance, so for the public, it would appear to be a benefit. But like the old ordinance, this ordinance will depend, in terms of effectiveness, on education and communication. So do you have plans to educate the public on how this works?
Well, I can tell you, there was already an article in the Sentinel. We will post on our Facebook page, just for the record, we have, I think, six times more followers on the police department's Facebook page than any other city page. We have 18,000-plus followers. I don't think that there are, there may be other means of doing that, whether it be mailings or whatever, I mean, I don't, I'm not into advertising, so I don't know. I certainly would agree, make an agreement with the council, that maybe for the first storm or two, we might do warnings rather than the money fine to try and educate people. But, and I speak from, like I've said tonight, I speak from experience, I think if I knocked on every door in the city of Leominster, I'd still write 20 tickets or 30 tickets, because, I mean, I've been there and banged on the doors and had people upset that I was waking them up to get their car out of the street, so I'm not going to get everybody, but I certainly am willing to explore and talk with the mayor to try and educate the public about this.
Well, your ordinance doesn't anticipate communicating to the public.
Oh, yeah.
Paragraph C. So I would just ask to please, you know, and I'm sure you will, make the best effort to get that communication out there every way you can.
Yep.
There's still going to be some gaps, but people are going to take the time to get used to it, and the better we communicate with the public, I think the better the experience is going to be.
The attorney, Denise, says he likes to hear my mellifluous voice every winter, calling him with the parking ban, so you'll certainly be hearing my voice.
Very good. Thank you, thank you, Chief.
Thank you, Counselor Bonanza. Counselor Schelfel's up.
Yeah, thank you very much. Thank you very much, Chief, I think this is much improved. My concern was really all about how to communicate this to the public, and I think you've exhausted most kind of regular avenues of communication. So it will be a trial and error, and people will have to get used to it. But I think, again, if, you know, there are problems or issues with it, you can always come back, we can always fix it, we can always change it. So this is, this is much improved, and I'm happy to support it, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Thank you. Counselor Frida?
Thanks, Chief. Couldn't you use Code Red?
That's in here. I mean, we could, we could maybe change the, I don't know if somebody can change the wording of that.
For the communication.
Oh, for sure.
To let everybody know ahead of time.
Oh, yeah.
What's going to happen.
Code Red does voice?
Everybody pays attention to that.
Email, text, and it even does the, is it TTY? It does all those, and I put it out on all of them, for sure.
Yeah.
I heard there was a question about specifically naming Code Red, because in case we switch to another...
I'm not talking about when there's a storm or what you're going to do, I'm talking about, everybody's trying to determine how to tell the public.
Oh, I can do that if you want.
Do it ahead of time.
Yeah.
And say, this is what's happening.
Yeah.
Make the announcement.
I think the mayor's going to advertise it on the radio station, and he and I spoke about it on his show last week.
It's not easy to communicate to the public, I think we all have that experience. We talk to somebody and they say, well, I didn't know that, and they say, well, it's been that way for 10 years, you know?
I hear that every day in my jaw, counselor.
Unless they're directly impacted by something, they don't know what the laws are or what the rules are.
Oh, yeah, we get it. And we're, you know, we're also reasonable when they appeal the tickets, you know, we're reasonable. Really more looking for repeat offenders.
Alright, thank you.
Sure.
Okay, we're going to run into a little bit of a glitch for timeline. I'm just, I was talking with the... Okay, so we're going to try to speed up the process, but as it is this evening, you know, after tonight, if it's voted on favorably, which I anticipate, we're looking at a first and second reading and a hearing in there too, so...
Oh, wow, I thought we were at the second reading.
And then a 21-day appeal period.
Okay.
So the glitch we're going to run into is this potentially may not become law until the end of December.
Okay.
But we're going to, I've asked the clerk to look into the possibility of having the first reading, the hearing, the first reading, and then that same night, have a second reading, if it's possible, because of the nature of it. So we'll get, we'll get a ruling on that, which would at least move it toward the beginning of December. I'm not sure if it's possible, probably not.
It's not going to start in January, so don't worry.
Wow. You reading Farmers Almanac again?
So, do you have the ability to implement it before it becomes ordinance? If we're moving in that direction, as an emergency?
No.
So then what would happen is, the current?
We'll follow current ordinance.
Current ordinance is in place.
We'll be, we'll be reasonable.
Okay. Alright.
I should have, I know I should have put the petition in in July.
No, that's fine. It's just, this is what it is, it's before, so it looks, it looks like we're going to move forward with it.
I only thought about it when I found the frost on my cruising windshield a couple weeks ago.
I know, I know. Hopefully, we'll have a nice, you know, November, December, we won't have to worry about this, but we did have a Halloween snowstorm just a few years back, and it's coming Thursday, so...
I think at this point, you really don't know what's coming with the weather, it's so changeable.
I know, you can't, what are you going to do, you know? What are you going to do?
We'll just roll with it.
Okay, alright, great. And then with your public service announcement, if people can also find out they can't park on sidewalks and plowing sidewalks.
Such a struggle, oh, yeah.
Crosswalks, bus stops.
All kinds of winter problems.
A lot of plowing issues.
Snow blowing into other people's driveways.
Yeah, yeah, so...
We handle those, goes all the time.
It's just something that you probably have to address on a different level altogether, but we're with you on it.
Okay.
Thank you for coming down tonight, we appreciate it.
Sure, just a real quick update, if you don't mind, is the, Counselor Demroski's not here tonight, the car park cameras are supposed to go up this week.
Nice.
Two cameras are supposed to go up this week.
Yeah, perfect.
And then we're looking at some cameras in some other areas, but the car park ones, you guys graciously passed the money.
By the way, in Middletown, Connecticut, and another town in Connecticut, also around the Boston area, most of the bike trails is lights all over them.
Yeah.
All over them.
Yeah, I'm working with, I'm working with Joe Pori on the A-phones, those blue call boxes, which I've confirmed can take a camera on the top of them, they put them on a mast.
It's great.
So the camera company we deal with in Aphone are talking. About safety, you know?
Thank you.
Alright.
If there's any reason why you want to come down and address the council the next month or so, and any matters, feel free.
Thank you.
Okay? Thanks for coming down tonight, I appreciate it, Mike.
Take care.
Take care, thanks for everything. That was awesome. Okay, I told him this was going to go well, or the bet was he could tag my cars in the driveway. So I'm kind of glad you guys are all set with this. Okay, we're going to move to the next meeting tonight, we have the Planning Director, Elizabeth Wood, and the Planning Board Chairman, John Sousa, they've requested, this is a request by Counselor David Cormier to join us, and this is in reference to a partial release of a certain bond on a certain subdivision in January of 2019, without the City Council being petitioned for street acceptance under the subdivision regulations of the city of Leominster, stated in Section 14 of the regulations. So if you can just, for the public, introduce yourself and let the public know who you are, please. And first of all, thank you very much for being here this evening.
Good evening, John Sousa, Chairman of the Planning Board.
Thank you for having us. I'm Elizabeth Wood, the Planning and Development Director.
Thank you, thank you. Okay, John, I'm going to, would you like to handle this, or would you like Elizabeth?
I can do it, I can fill in.
So, let me, let me just start off by saying, we're only, we're just focusing specifically on the question, and the question was the bond release piece.
Right.
We all pretty much understand the subdivision laws in the Commonwealth and also the ordinances of the city of Leominster, so we understand that you also have the authority to do something like this. I think that the big question is, it's an unaccepted street. I had a chance to go up to the street to see it with the ward counselor that had a concern, so he brought to my attention a few items up there that were still pending as far as unfinished pieces of the puzzle. I also went up there 4:43 with my wife yesterday in the rain, had a chance to see the retention pond filling up, and some of the drainage there was flooding the street, so, you know, it was a heavy rain yesterday, I'm sure everybody was inundated by it, but we just, you know, if you can just share with us kind of what led to the release of the three-quarters of the bond, and if we're in a good position right now, because there's a letter of memorandum of understanding with the work to be completed, if there is one, and so on and so forth, and I'll yield the floor to Counselor Cormier.
Okay.
I'm going to go right here. Go ahead.
Okay, I...
You have, Counselor, you have a conflict on this?
No, I don't have a conflict, but I just wondered why John Roseberry isn't here, because that was the original question.
Yeah, I don't, yeah, I don't know.
I haven't talked to him. I did speak with Mr. Roseberry, and...
Okay, you can fill us in on that when it's time.
Okay.
Counselor, go ahead, John.
What, as, what happened was, as in all subdivisions that we get, the initial properties, we have, we put a covenant on the entire property. As the basic road gets completed and the infrastructure, the surge in the water, then we take, and the next step is we, we start releasing covenants. So if there's 15 lots or 10 lots, we'll say, okay, we'll release five. And then once we get down to the point where the work, the majority of the work is done, then we switch from holding the deeds of the covenant to a bond. So at that point, we work very closely with the DPW, and they will come up with an estimate on what has to be done, whether it's new manholes, or drainage, or lighting, or sidewalks, and final drawings. So we'll take and we'll get an estimate and say, okay, now it's, it's like $40,000, so we'll go from the covenant to approximately 40, 50,000, all depends on the size of the subdivision. When we get down to the end, the road is done, the top coat is done, it's starting to look like it's pretty, you know, pretty much finished, at that point, we go back to the DPW, and usually the developer will come back in to us with a request and say, can you release some of the bond money? It's their money, we're holding it there, and it's held in the treasurer's office. At that point, we work closely with the DPW, and they will come back to us with a figure, say, well, this has to be done, that has to be done, and it's like 10,000 or 15,000, in this case, it was $10,000 of work to be, to be completed. So the board at that time chose, say, okay, we've got enough money to complete the project, okay? And we still have the bond today, we still holding a bond for approximately, for $10,000. And we've talked to the DPW, and that's sufficient amount of money to complete the project. Now, we've gotten down to the road, it seems like the developer is all done, he's not doing any more, so we've already talked to the DPW a couple of weeks ago, and they're moving forward to go out and get quotes, because it looks like he's not going to do it, to go out and get quotes and finish the project. And we'll, then the DPW will hire a contractor to finish the project, we'll get the as-built drawings completed, and when we get the as-built drawings completed, then we'll petition the City Council to accept the street. But we still have a bond being held by the city treasurer.
And the, the planning board believe that the $10,000 that exists in that trust will cover the expenses?
I talked to the DPW today to confirm it, to, you know, and they did. They thought that there was sufficient monies in there. Probably I could have done, you know, hindsight's always better, and we could have said, okay, we'll keep 30,000, oh, we'll keep 20,000, and put more, more pressure on the developer to complete the project. And I probably leaned to doing that, but there's nothing in our law, bylaws to say that we do that. It doesn't say we can't do it, it says we can do it. It's just a judgment call at the time, and, but it is definite that we have enough money to finish the project. So that's where we stand today. We have enough money to finish the project, we have talked to the DPW, they've got their quotes, and they're going to move forward at this point to, to complete the project with the monies that we have on hand.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Cormier?
Thank you, thank you very much for coming down, I appreciate this. You know, I, I know that many years ago, I know Elizabeth wasn't here at the time, you know, we had a, we had a problem with unaccepted streets, and I think we, you know, John, we had had a lot of meetings about it. I'd formed a committee so that we could figure out how we were going to move forward to reduce the list and work with the mayor, which we've done, and I have to give him a lot of credit, and all my colleagues in the City Council for, you know, sort of that support, when I was council president, to see that we can reduce the list. And I think we all agree, we don't, you know, we don't want the list to grow. But, you know, one of, one of the issues with, with this particular, you know, project that I see is when we had a conversation about how we got to the point where we had, you know, what I call, you know, all the sins of the past, which, you know, all these unaccepted streets here, one of the issues that we had talked about was that, you know, we needed to be careful with bond money, you know, and certainly make sure that we're holding enough of it. That was probably one of the issues as to how we got here. So, you know, when I found out that some of this bond money was released, I was immediately concerned, especially when I went up to this particular subdivision. You know, we have a hydrant that's out of service, it's covered with a bag, it's out of service. The council president and I witnessed the other day catch basins that, that aren't catching water. I'm sure that's not going to be cheap to fix. I don't know what the design was supposed to be, but, you know, they're not catching water, you don't, you don't need to be an engineer to see that. I have concerns with the design of the detention pond. A toddler could very easily get into that detention pond, there's no fencing around it. It appears it's on private property at this point. It looks like the house on the corner on Bel Air Heights was sort of consumed by the developer, and the detention pond is legally part of that property now.
It is correct.
So I don't know what's going to happen with that.
They bought that property.
Right.
That was part of the development, when they bought that property, to put the detention pond there.
Right.
Is that, all of the detention bonds, that was all built under the guidance of the DPW, as they were building it, there was, the engineers looked at it, be prior to the program, and they, supposedly it meets all the latest ordinance for water quality, okay? Is that document not sufficient? I don't know, okay? Was it designed for a 25-year storm, and we hit a, with the heavy rain, we hit 50 years? I don't know that either. So those are judgment calls that we get. We're very cognizant, and I was talking to, that we talked about many times, and one of the proposals that we have, and I think we're going, the planning board is working on some updates to the subdivision regulations, the subdivision regulations, okay, is that we want to take and hold the percentages higher, okay? And it's the only way to do it, number one. And number two, try to put more onus on the developer to finish the project, okay? And we only can do that with money.
Right.
Okay? So that is our goal, is to change those numbers, make it so that the developer, before he gets his final bond release, would have to take and get a completion that everything is done. I'm talking about everything, including the as-builds, and then we would release the bonds, and they, and the final step would be that they would have to petition this council for acceptance. So that's the direction we're going into, is trying to close, and I agree with you to close the loop. I agree with the, I had a long discussion just last, last week with an old developer, whose name will remain anonymous, but he built a lot of houses in the 50s and 60s, okay? There were no regulations, there were no requirements. He could have made the streets 18 feet wide or 25 feet wide. The pamphlet that I was shown was basically eight and a half by, was about six pages or eight pages, eight and a half paper folded over to make a little pamphlet, and that was our ordinance. So a lot of these houses were built with no ordinances, and there was no requirement for acceptance. There was no requirement to go down, you know, three feet and put in a base, and, so that's where it's hurting us. They left, they built the houses to the requirements of those days. We had a discussion a couple of weeks ago with the DPW, and, and we take and, on the, on the DPW, what we, and that whole discussion was, how can we do things with the planning board and the DPW, and the mayor was involved, how can we go forward with accepted streets? And we're going to come up with, you know, and, and the decision is that we're not going to say, you've got such a, such a street that was built in 1960, and we're going to take and you have to abide by 2019 standards. Doesn't make sense. So the DPW does have the old subdivision regulations. So when the street comes in, it's an older street to be accepted, there are certain safety standards that we have to abide by today. And we'll go by those and go by the older standards that they were built in originally, so that when, if we have to go back, you don't have to go back to taking an 18-foot road and making it 32 feet wide.
John, with all due respect, can we just kind of twist it around a little bit and talk about what we're dealing with here tonight?
Okay.
That's that one street where the bond was given back and worked as a bit in order for a year.
Go ahead.
Mark, go ahead. I'm sorry, Dave, you all set?
Oh, yeah, just, yeah, just a, just a couple more things. You know, I, I certainly have to respect the DPW. I mean, they're, they're the ones that go out and look at this kind of stuff, and, you know, but, you know, just to have the as-builds done, to have all that hydrant, I don't know what's wrong with the hydrant, maybe it's not a big deal. However, I would think if it's not such a big deal, that it just would be odd. I mean, you know, catch basins that, that aren't catching water, I mean, if they didn't pitch the road right, and you have to, and you have to grind up the road and re-pitch it, and a fence that, you know, is, I mean, essentially, you have a swimming pool there that has no fence around it, you know? A toddler goes in there, especially if you have a really heavy, heavy, heavy storm, you know, or, or if it's winter time, and, you know, the ground's frozen, so the water isn't seeping in and draining out, and it's, and then, you know, the water's building up in there, it, it could, it could potentially get quite deep. I mean, that's a wet area, there's no fence, there's no fence around. So, you know, you talked about looking over subdivision regulations and, and, you know, sort of bettering them, which I totally support. And, you know, those are some of the things that, that concern me, is you have a detention pond in a neighborhood with no fence around it, and, and I'm not just, I'm just not sure that we're retaining enough money, or that we, or, you know, we either released, you know, too much money, or we didn't take enough money in the first place, so that the percentage would be higher of what we init, you know, of what we released in January.
I, I can't answer that totally on the question of the detention pond or retention pond. We look at those at the time. Some of those are, in the case of detention ponds, they're, they're only there to detain water, okay? They, they have done, so it's, people make them their lawns, they had, they were swale, so the majority of the time, they're empty. So there is no, no requirement, okay? And there has been no requirement to take and, and do anything around those. What we have done, and we've, we've, in the past, we've done a few with fences, but they turned out to be, they fall down after a while, leaves and maintenance get piled up against them, and all of a sudden, the water doesn't flow to them anymore, and the, the, the working of the pond goes away, or whatever it might be. We've had, we got one developer, we got a developer on the books, it hasn't been built, where they're going to, coming up, we're going to call it rain gardens, where it's, again, little detention ponds on every lot, and all their downspouts and all the rest of that, and it's going to be special vegetation. That's an approved method of doing it. We have one subdivision that we approved years ago, where we, we said, okay, we're going to plant a thorny-type bush, I can't remember what it was now, around the pond to take in, that would prevent children from going into the pond, because they wouldn't be able to get through the thorns, but the, the water would still flow through it. That might be a solution.
With all due respect, has this detention pond been looked at since we, since January, when the money was released?
No.
Okay. Counselor Cormier, you all set?
Finlay, yeah, thank you.
Counselor Cormier, go ahead.
Mr. Sousa, I guess my question is, and, and maybe I'm a little naive with this, but why are we releasing any of the money? Why is the onus now going to the DPW? You're a contractor, you want to build this, you want to make this development, you're going to put a bond until that street is completed, finished, and approved and accepted by the city. Why is any of the money being released?
Well, sometimes we have excessive amounts of money, and they worked, it's a whole method, methodology. Something, you know, let's say, it could have started out at 100,000 or 50,000, all depends on, or, or a million. All depends how a developer wants to do it. They could have a covenant, they could have a bond. And it is a method of controlling it, and, and we rely on the expertise, and also has the right to the developer to get his money back, if he's put it through. So we rely on the expertise of the, the DPW, and we usually do add a little bit more money onto it, and say, okay, we can release, because that is the standard from which we work.
If I may, but we come back to the, the same exact situation that we're in right now. Now, we have, and you've kept $10,000 bond, but now, the job, the, the developer is gone, no intention of coming back and finishing the street, so now, the responsibility falls on the DPW.
That's right. And, and, and at the time, everything else, remember, everything is, is a judgment call at the time. And, and when the developer comes in, he's, oh yeah, I'm going to finish this, I got this, that, and it's, and they, they tell you the world, and he, he was probably a very good salesman that evening. And, and some of those things, remember, you know, everybody called the board, we're all volunteers, okay? We get paid a little bit, that's stipend, and, and we do our best, we're not engineers, and, and we try, and we are, our interest is with the city, okay, and the people. So we try our best to make sure there's enough money to cover it. And in this case, yeah, we probably should have kept a little bit more money, but hindsight's always, we, at the point, we thought that we had enough to cover it. And it was a judgment call at that time.
So, I mean, and, and I think you guys do a wonderful job. I, I'm trying to say to you, what can we do to make this, to take the, take the pressure off of you guys? What can we do to put in place so that you guys aren't, aren't getting called down here and saying, hey, street not done? I mean, I don't know about the rest of the council, but I get at least one email, one phone call a week, my street's not accepted, my street's not accepted. And, and I have to explain, listen, it's going to take a long time, these are things that went on 20, 30, 40 years ago, we're, we're getting to the point where we're trying to address them. So that's what I want to say, I just want to make sure that we're not going to stir up the...
And we try, and then sometimes we try to get accepted, we have enough money, we have the bonds, the road is totally done. We have one in town now where the road is totally complete. But we have to go, and the, the last thing was to get all the deeds for that road to be transferred, okay? We got one person on that road, oh, if that road becomes accepted, my taxes are going to go up. So he refuses to let up the deed. What are we going to do? Now, the only way we can take that road is, that's one, we don't, you know, is we're going to go back, and we would have to take that road by eminent domain. So sometimes it's people that may cause their own problems.
Chair Maye, Ed?
Go ahead.
I, if, we're going to go around. Counselor Cormier, you all set? Counselor Idinger?
You know, Mr. Sousa, I, I, you know, really agree with both the counselors, Cormier, that we've had a lot of problems in the past with, with unaccepted streets, and it just seems like we should keep more money aside, you know, as Counselor Cormier said, to protect the city, and, how do I want to put it? Before that final money is released, well, it never, it will never be released to the contractor, it's going to go to the DPW right now, right? To finish up the street?
Unless there's some money left.
Unless there's some money left, and then, you know, and then you come down to the council and get the streets accepted? Is that what it is?
Well, in this case, where the, the developer is gone, it would probably end up with us, the planning board doing it.
Okay, is that in agreement with the ordinance?
Yeah, that's fine. Anybody can, anybody can petition the street acceptance.
Okay.
Okay, and the planning board could do it, a counselor can do it, but in this case, where the developer is gone, we'll probably do it, once we get it. And, and we don't, I'm, I'm, I'm going to ask them for a breakdown, what the costs are, to see what, you know, just where the money falls. There may be more, more than enough money, I'm not sure, it could be 3,000 or 4,000 for the as-builds, there's a couple of light bulbs that got to be finished, and there's some drainage calculations, and they'll say, it might come up to 5,000. So if it comes up to 5,000, then they finish the project, it's done, there's $1,000 left, it gets released to the developer.
And if it's more, are there any repercussions to the developer?
Not at this point, no. Okay? Yes, I, I totally agree. Is it a possibility, at the judgment call at the time, that it was done, that the 6,000, I mean, that, that 10,000 was sufficient to cover the, the project? Okay? But we also run into a problem sometimes where we're, we're moving on this one, others we haven't moved on, and so it looks like the price is going to, it, we, it's going to be covered. We've got some other bonds that we're still holding that are 10 years old. At that time, the developer left, we had the money, the project was at 5,000 to finish, we held 10, okay? He still left. We're sitting there with $10,000, so now, but now the project is 15, because we waited 10 years or 15 years. So we're trying to clean those up, so to get those bonds being, being a little more proactive in getting those things done like we are with Ava. So we're not waiting to five, six, or 10 years with, which trying, we're doing it right now, where the costs are relevant.
I don't think I have any other questions.
Okay, thank you. Counselor, good answer.
Thank you, Mr. President. So, almost two years to the day, November 1st, 2017, the council, we, as a subcommittee, President Subcommittee on Street Acceptance, which I was the chairperson of, voted on finalizing our report, which we spent six or seven meetings compiling. And what we found was there were hundreds of unaccepted streets in the city, as we all know. But we determined that there were 26 top-tier streets, meaning streets that caused the biggest problems for the people that were living on them. Those streets ranged from being constructed anywhere as early as 1973 and as late as 2010. Of the 26 streets, only six of them had bonds with any money left remaining on the bonds. So that's 20 that had no bond money at all. Those bonds ranged from $5,233 at the low end to $46,061 at the high end, and I can suggest to you that none of them were appropriate or enough to cover the finishing of the construction of the street through to public acceptance. So this problem's been kicking around for a long time, and it's very frustrating to, especially the ward councils, and I will say that the vast majority of these streets are in Ward 3 and Ward 4. So I feel Counselor Cormier's pain. I have had numerous conversations with constituents about these problems. I have attended meetings that constituents have organized about these problems, and I was told we would never get a street accepted, because it had been decades since any streets were accepted at all. Most recently, through efforts of the mayor's office, the city council, and Copman and Page, we were able to get two streets accepted, and the mayor has suggested a cooperation and willingness to pare this list down more and develop more street acceptances to make this problem a smaller problem. So it becomes a bit frustrating when we end up with potentially a new addition to the list. Now, I agree with you, Mr. Sousa, that if all of this background wasn't present, Ava Way would just be another one of the streets on this list, because the developer does not have the incentive to finish the street, and nothing would have happened. People would have used the street, the street would have, they would have lived with the street for potentially decades. Now we have a spotlight, and the DPW, how the DPW determined that 10,000 was going to incent the developer to finish the street, I do not know, and I agree with the counselor at large, it would have been nice if the DPW came this evening, because the real question is, you, you have to, as a planning board, rely on the professional expertise of the DPW in determining what the cost of the, of finishing the road is, using specifically as the regulations provide, Section 14 H1, prevailing wages even, right? Determining what the, how this work is to be determined. But I should tell you, if you read the reg, it says you may reduce the bond, doesn't say you have to reduce the bond.
That's right.
Says you may. That's, that's number one of, of Section H. And number three of Section H, it says that you will not reduce the bond, bond, you shall not reduce the bond to less than 20% of the original approved cost estimate, which refers to what it was going to cost when the bond was initially placed. I would just ask you, beseech you, that in the future, when someone comes to you for a bond reduction, that you get very aggressive about what you are not going to release, because I, look, we all know, sitting here, let's, let's call it what it is. If this hadn't been in the spotlight, like I said, this would just be on the list. The DPW is doing the work, because no one wants to be, no one wants this to be number 27.
I agree.
So I hope that the as-builds, that the street acceptance plan, that they're legal to convey, or if the developer is not available, legal for eminent domain, and whatever construction costs are necessary, come within that $10,000. If they exceed it, the egg on our face is just going to get thicker. So that's why I, all I can say is, look, I'm not trying to pass blame, all I'm trying to say is, we've got some rules, we could examine making the rules more, more stringent, tougher, but we have, in my opinion, tools in place now to stop this from happening again. We are, I think, going in a positive direction with street acceptance. It's going to be a long process, it's going to take a lot of time, but we certainly don't want to exacerbate it. I really appreciate you coming down and being candid with us this evening about how this happened. Again, it might have been better if Mr. Roseberry was here to tell us how he came up with a recommendation for $10,000. I'm no engineer either, but I can tell you, if I'm sitting in, in the planning board, I am not voting to return 30 of a $40,000 bond when we don't have title to that street. I'm not doing it. Just not going to do it. You would never get my vote for that, so, it's as simple as that.
Did you have something more? I, I think one of the things is that the, the planning board has been very active in, how to put this correctly, but we work closely with, to be proactive, to get things done. We've worked with, you know, a lot of comments, positive comments with developers, a lot of people come, gee, we love working with them, because we are a planning board that works closely with the developers, and we try to work with them. We make judgments sometimes, okay? And sometimes we make the wrong judgment, and I think that's what happened here. It was a good salesman, and we made the wrong judgment.
Well, it's just, I guess it's just a, a lesson.
Yeah.
That's all. I mean, I, you know, I look at, I agree, I mean, we all are fallible, right?
Yeah.
But I, I think we have a backdrop here, too. And, you know, I, I hope and I trust that in the future, our judgments will be a little bit more, our eyes will be a little bit better peeled toward protecting ourselves from getting into a, a bigger problem with streets.
I have no, I have all of the intention of being much stricter on these guys.
All right, well, that's, that's good to hear.
All set, Counselor?
Thank you.
Before I yield the Florida Council's shelf of effort, I appreciate value, and thank you for being humbled over this and accepting the fact that, you know, we're all dealing, we're all in this together. You are all volunteers. John, you weren't even at that meeting when they voted on, were you?
No, I wasn't.
You're right, okay, you're on vacation, so, and we're, I'm going to, you might have raised some flags that night, unfortunately, we're in a position to do that, so it is what it is.
I have some very, very talented people on the board with 20 and 30 years on there. And I don't think I've, I think my newest board member is, is six years, most of them are eight, nine, or 10 years. So we've got a lot of experience, and I really, whether I'm there or not, I don't think it would have made much difference.
Right.
We, we, we hope that we make a difference, okay? But I wouldn't, it's not something I would hang my hat on.
I'm going to ask you, as a professional courtesy, to consider maybe, within the planning board, have a policy where, when something like this comes up, that you notify the council on it, and the reason is because Counselor Cormier may have received 25 phone calls, why isn't the hydrant working? You're not privy to that. So what would happen is, by contacting the council, we can share some of the things we know about the street from the neighborhood that might help you to... we know about the street from the neighborhood that might help you to be able to deliberate on a resolve.
I'll double-check on this, but I'll ask Elizabeth. I'm pretty sure you get our agendas.
We get your agenda, but this meeting, I think, took place the night of the inauguration?
Oh, wow.
Correct. And it lasted 13 minutes, is that correct?
That's right.
And there was no discussion on this whatsoever after it was presented by the chair, by the director, and it was voted upon, so.
Okay. They can't.
Transparency.
Yeah.
Okay, Counselor Shalfo Zephyr?
Thank you. Yeah, thank you very much. And thank you both for coming down tonight. This is, you know, everybody has a long workday, so we really, I certainly appreciate it. You know, in listening to the process, I mean, we have a long history of these unaccepted streets. They've, each one of them has its own challenges. But in thinking about, as I was listening, I kept thinking about, we need to eliminate the judgment here. I mean, we should have a methodology, I think, that is really consistent. And number one, establishing what the bond is per project. And then number two, a consistent methodology for determining how much is released and when. So that we don't have a 13-minute meet, and, you know, I wasn't at that meeting, I don't wanna think about that meeting. But if we can eliminate, it takes, you know what it does? It would take the planning board, the planning director, off the hook if there were consistent processes or procedures in place that define how each of these are arrived at, how the bond is arrived. Rather than give the developer, this is how the developer wants to do it, well, you know what? This is how we in the city wanna do things consistently. And I have to think that there are other communities that deal with this as well, that we could tap into, you know, and look at how, how they handle these kinds of things. Because that's a real problem. Not having the money to finish these things just, you know, creates this ongoing, you know, we're trying to clean up the backlog, we're trying not to have this happen in the future. So, you know, let's figure out a way to streamline the process, perhaps.
I know, you wanna answer?
Chair, may I?
You go ahead.
Okay, no, please do, go ahead.
Thank you for having me. I've been here about a year on Halloween, and it'll be my first year with the city. And I wanna say that everything, I wanna back up everything that John has said, but I also wanna say that this came, this matter came in front of me three months in on the job. It's still my job to do. I read the regulations, which are on page 62 of our zoning, our subdivision regulations, and I believe Counselor Benanza referred to those. I followed the letter of the law exactly. That's what I had to go by. And this is the result that came forth. So I heard from Counselor Shalfo Zephyr that perhaps we need, or we need to notify the council as a courtesy. I would agree with that. Perhaps we can do an amendment to our subdivision regulations to make that part of the policy. Because if I'm not here, if I'm out on brain surgery, or I'm on, out for sick or something, and someone's covering for me, and they have to read these regulations, they need to know what they are. I might not be there to tell them. So putting something in writing is 100% a good idea. I also wanna say, while I am new to Lemonster, I do have 14 years of experience in planning with three different communities and additionally the private sector. And the problem that we're having here in Lemonster was not a problem that we had in Sheridan, Wyoming. It was not a problem that we had in Windham, New Hampshire. And I can tell you what we did in those communities, if you have interest.
Not tonight. That would be for another night, though. Right now, we just wanna deal with this issue. But thank you.
Yeah.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Counselor Shalfo Zephyr, you have the floor.
You know, in looking at this and reading this, it seems that the, the process for releasing the bond are, it seems clear, but I guess in practice, it really doesn't operate that way. I mean, the, the language is somewhat vague, you know, 20% of the prevailing wage for construction costs, well, you know, who determines that? The DPW, I guess, determines that.
I think, I think we ran into that problem in the past where they were using, the contractors were coming back in with, and they were using not prevailing wage estimates, not using prevailing wage in their estimates, because, oh, I have my own contractors, I'm a non, you know, non-union shop, and so this is what I, what's gonna cost me to finish. And in the past years, I'm talking 10, 15 years ago, we would get estimates, and we'd increase the estimates that we got from the developers. So that's why we closed it a little bit, saying, no, you can't use non-union wages, you have to use prevailing wage figures. So that is, that, that's an outgrowth of, of a problem we had in history. Other town, some other towns, you know, Lemonster tries to be, do things the right way. But the reason we, one of the big reasons we have is because we plow the roads and we take care of the roads in the winter. I've got a niece who lives in another town, and tell it's accepted. Okay? Absolutely no plowing, nothing is done to the road. But we made the decision a long time ago, for safety reasons, that we'd take care of the roads, that we'd plow them. So if it gets to be in the middle of winter, and there's two feet of snow, and the road's not getting plowed, that those people go back to the developer and say, hey, you gotta take care of this. Well, we don't do that. So that's, that's a sort of a club that's been taken away from us. And that makes it more difficult.
Counselor?
I think I'm good for the moment.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Counselor Frida?
I think I understand everything that Mr. Souza's saying. I think it's important to note as well, although you weren't here that night, the vice chair has been a longstanding member of the committee, and she's an attorney. So I think there's some, there's more questions than people are looking at. The question that appears that we were asking you to come down for tonight, if I'm correct in reading it, is to find out why this happened without the city council being petitioned for street acceptance. And I also think that it was, and I did not vote for it because I thought it wasn't transparent enough. And we're still circling the wagons here on, on this particular project because we don't wanna mention the name, even though it's been mentioned a couple of times. You know, so the people out there watching tonight are gonna say, gee, I wonder if that's my subdivision? Because they're not gonna know what we're talking about. But John Roseberry was requested to be here, and I think Elizabeth was gonna respond to that. That was, every single counselor talks about the DPW, and we don't have any answer to the question.
We received the communication. Kim, can you share it?
The DPW director declined to allow him to come to the meeting.
That's the answer?
Yeah.
Absolutely.
Do we have a reason for that? Are we gonna?
That's, that's what we have.
So, I'm not quite sure that it's fair to be, to be questioning these people this way with a, a board that has responsibilities of their own. They have their own oversight. I understand there's some mistakes that have been made. But I don't think there's one councilor sitting here that could say that at some point in time, over all our careers, we haven't made a mistake in a vote. So I think we need to hear from the DPW. I mean, I don't know how much anybody wants to pursue it, but I think fair is fair. If you're asking a question, it's gotta be for all parties involved.
All set. Thank you. Okay, Counselor Cormier?
If I, you know, if I...
We're gonna start the meeting in a minute, just so you guys know.
Sure. I'll be very quick. You know, and if I may, you know, I did, I did word that, that way, you know, without coming to the city council. You know, and I, I base that on the fact that we, you know, we had meetings in the past about releasing bonds, and, and, you know, I don't wanna put words in anybody's mouth, and, you know, I don't wanna, I don't wanna look back at meetings from five years ago. I mean, I don't have time for that, I don't think anybody does. But I was under the impression, I, I had the feeling when I walked away, that little to no bond money was going to be released on projects anymore until they came to the city council. And when I read page 62, you know, it does say in here that, that it does use the word "may," that they may reduce the bond. So I, I took that as, okay, this is how we're gonna nip this in the butt, you know, we're, we're not gonna reduce the bond, or we're gonna reduce it very, very little to keep the pressure on to not abandon roads, you know? So, did they have to come to the city council to release what they released? Apparently not. But I thought we sort of came to some kind of a consensus that this was the problem, you know, when, when I formed this, this committee years ago, and, and this is how we were gonna address it, was we were gonna release none to very little, so we wouldn't be in this, you know, situation again.
We're in a situation, we have to start the meeting by law.
Yeah, okay.
We'll only keep you a couple of minutes, if you may, if we may, then.
I've been here before, and I'll be here again.
The October 28th meeting of the city council is now in session. Please stand and join me in a salute to the flag.
And to the republic, for which it stands, one nation, under God, individual validity and justice.
Begin with a roll call of the honorable members of the council. Counselor David Cormier.
Present.
Counselor Pauline Cormier.
Present.
Counselor Adinger.
Present.
Counselor Benanza.
Present.
Counselor Shalfo Zephyr.
Present.
Counselor Frida.
Present.
Seven members are present. The chairwoman of Rutgers is not here this evening, she's sick. Do I have a motion for recess?
So moved.
Seconded. We're in recess. Counselor Benanza, you have the floor.
Yeah, the subcommittee report that we filed two years ago included some suggestions about strengthening the subdivision regulations, and some of those were modeled after the town of Concord, Massachusetts. And I just read them, because I have the report with me. And one of the things that I think isn't present in our system, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, as I read your reg, or our reg.
Yeah.
It says, in consultation with Department of Public Works. When I read the Concord bylaw, it says, a signed recommendation report from the town engineer. So someone's gotta put their name on it. I, I tend to believe, based on my experience in life, when people sign off of a document like that, that becomes a public record, they're a little bit more careful about what they're recommending. I might recommend to you that our regulations be updated to require somebody, whether it be our, I don't know if we have a city engineer, but I assume we do, city engineer sign off a written recommendation, and that document could be given to us like anybody else's a courtesy with your, with the planning board documents.
Yeah, I don't have a problem with that. Is, foolish me, we, we think that when we request from the DPW, I assume, assume can get me in a lot of trouble sometime, that it is coming from their engineering department. Okay? And, and we do get a written, you know, it's a written document that we get from them. Is it signed? It probably isn't. If it's signed, it's got, there's a name on it anyway, and we reference the DPW.
You might, you might wanna think about developing a form where, you know...
Well, we can't. And that's, that's not an issue.
Yeah, just a thought.
I take, I take the suggestions, because I, I agree with you. I mean, this whole thing, it's something that's been a bar, a thorn on my side for years, that I, I know the problem, I, I see the results, and I try to, to cover it. And I've been real sticky on some. This one, for some reason, it slid through.
Well, we're all happy that it's being addressed, at least.
So we, we will address it.
Yep.
Okay, John, do you have anything else you wanna add?
I think I've talked too much already, but I think I'm doing fine. No? I'm, I'm in good shape.
Okay.
Elizabeth?
Chair, I, I don't like doing this, but I, I hear, I'm hearing what you want, and I want the same thing, and I believe the mayor wants the same thing, as John said on October 10th. We had a meeting with John Roseberry from the DPW. The clerk was there. We realize, upon researching with the town treasurer, that no bond money has been collected or held since 2006. And I don't know if this is something that Mr. Benanza, Counselor Benanza's research already brought forth, or if this is new information to you. So what I'm saying is, we have all these unaccepted streets. Since 2006, we've collected zero funds to ensure their completion.
So what are you trying to point out?
We have a grim situation.
Wrong, or?
Yeah, we don't have any, there is some bond, there's some bond money. We got the money.
Prior to 2006, there is money.
Okay.
Okay, so prior, okay, gotcha. Okay, well, first of all, thank you for coming down tonight. And I, I realize as the council president, we all do, we're all in this together. And we also value the fact that, you know, I, we watch your meetings, we attend your meetings, and you burn the candle late at night, and, and sometimes good deeds get punished, you know, things like that. But you work very hard for the city. We, we value you, and we appreciate you being involved as basically, you know, dedicated volunteers. And you bring a tremendous amount of knowledge and talent to the city to help the planning board, the director, and everybody else involved here. And I'm sure you got the message clear tonight, and I hope that there's some dialogue on the floor of the planning board to try to come up with, you know, the ultimate solution so we can strengthen what's happened. And when bond money's released, it doesn't take a year for us to come back together to figure out how to, how to deal with things that should be done. So, John, thank you very much, we appreciate it.
Thank you.
Elizabeth, you too, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we're now gonna open up the public forum. Actually, we have a hearing.
Okay.
We have a hearing that's gonna be with Counselor Frida, 13-20.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you.
13-20, this is a public hearing before the city council. 13-20, National Grid in Verizon, New England. Union Street, request to install one jointly owned pole on Union Street, beginning at a point approximately 250 feet west of the center line of the intersection of Theodore Drive, and continuing approximately 20 feet in a northern direction. Install new pole number 98-50 at entrance of driveway to 827 Union Street to service the new pole line running up driveway. And remove the backyard poles from house number 821 that service eight, number 827. I will let you do the presentation first on this, this hearing.
Okay. I'm Lauren Apolatano from National Grid. Basically, you read everything. We just need to alleviate the backyard poles in the, the property of 821. But we still need to be able to service 827, which is why we need the new pole.
Okay, I, I rode by there, and I, I think, if I'm correct, the driveway on the left side of the farmhouse, is that the, is that, that's 821. 827 would be the next house.
So there's 837, so, if I can show you on this.
If you're looking at the farmhouse on the corner of, of Union and Theodore.
Yeah.
There's a driveway on the other side of that farmhouse as well.
Yes, if you...
And at the end of that driveway, I didn't wanna go on to the property.
Yeah.
But at the end of that property, there's a, a pole.
Yeah, it's a long...
Is that the one we're talking about?
Yeah, it's a long, really long driveway.
Right.
Yes, ma'am.
And that's the one you wanna take out?
No, no, no. The one we need to take out is in, on 821's property. It's inside their property. I looked at it, and I couldn't really see it from the road, but that's, that's where it is, and we need to install a new one on Union Street that will feed the pole that's in the driveway or on the property for 827.
Okay, so that, the one in the back, then, is gonna stay there?
No, we, it's gonna, well...
You're gonna take that out?
We won't take it out. Verizon has to take it out for our agreement.
But it's gonna be removed, whoever, whoever removes it.
That's correct.
Okay, so that's gonna go, the one behind 821 is gonna go.
Right.
You're gonna put one up front that's gonna service 821. You're gonna put a new pole on the corner of, I'm sorry, 827.
Right.
You're gonna put a new one on the corner of 821.
No, we won't put anything, we don't need to put anything for 821. That pole in the back of 821 was only serving 827.
Okay, 9850 is the entrance of 827.
Correct. Correct, yeah.
All right, so there'll just be the two poles in the front.
Well, there's, there's two existing on either side of the driveway. One existing on either side of the driveway, we'll put one in the center that will go down the driveway to feed that house. Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Thank you.
Sure.
Are there any other counselors that wish to comment or have any questions regarding Again, nobody? Okay. I'll go to the public. Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to speak in favor or opposition to 13-20? Again, is there anyone who wishes to speak in opposition or in favor? For the certain final time, is there anyone else that wishes to speak in support or in opposition? or in opposition of 13-20? If not, I'll go back. Did you have any final comments? Are you good?
No ma'am.
Okay, no, any other counselors have any questions? Okay, I'll declare the hearing closed, Mr. President.
Thank you. The public forum is now open. The public forum is an opportunity for any member of the audience to speak on any matter specifically listed on the council agenda. Speakers will be asked to come to the in microphone and state their formal name and address along with identifying the specific item or items they wish to address. Each speaker is respectfully asked to keep their comments within a two-minute timeframe. The council will not be responding or answering any questions. However, with the discretion of the council president, clarification may be given. The first person who has signed up is Elizabeth Wood, who was here earlier this evening. Okay, Elizabeth?
I think she probably thought she had to sign in.
Okay, thank you. Would any of the members of the audience like to address the council? Second call, third and final call. If not, the public forum is closed. Council is now back in session. It is 12 minutes past 7:00. We have some orders, beginning with Communication 32, Madam Clerk.
C-32, Dean J. Mazzarella, Mayor, request an appropriation of $6,590 to the historical expense account, same amount to be transferred from the stabilization fund.
Communication 32 is referred to the Chairman of Finance.
Thank you, Mr. President, first time on the agenda, regular course, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, regular course. Communication 33.
C-33, Dean J. Mazzarella, Mayor, request an appropriation of $30,000 to the school department transportation expense account, same amount to be transferred from the stabilization fund.
Communication 33, again, is referred to the Chairman of Finance.
Once again, first time on the calendar, regular course, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, regular course. Communication 34.
C-34, Dean J. Mazzarella, Mayor, request an appropriation of $1,570 to the Board of Appeal expense account, same amount to be transferred from the stabilization fund.
Communication 34, again, is referred to the Chairman of Finance.
Thank you, Mr. President, first time on the calendar, regular course, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, regular course. We now begin with petitions, first time on the agenda, 14-20.
14-20, National Grid, Erdman Way, to install two 4-inch diameter concrete encased conduits in underground, three phase primary wires, approximately 275 feet from existing switchgear 1A to junction pull box 4. Existing box pad 4 is being replaced with a pull box and new junction enclosure in the same location to accommodate the new conduit.
Petition 14-20 is referred to the Chairwoman of Public Service.
Thank you, Mr. President, regular course, and we have to establish a hearing for 11:12 at 6:40.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Regular course on 14-20 with the hearing scheduled for 11:12 at 6:40 PM in the council chambers, thank you. We now move on to matters before the City Council. We'll begin with the financial committee, Finance Committee. Is the Chairman ready to give a financial report?
Yes, Mr. President. Okay, we began the fiscal year on July 1st, 2019, with a balance in the stabilization account of $19,890,850. We added interest since then of $85,909, and subtracted appropriations, either fully voted or pending, of $2,649,561, leaving a balance in the count of $17,327,198.
Thank you very much, appreciate that. Mr. Chairman, Communication 29, are you ready to report?
Yes, Mr. President. C-29, right?
Yes.
Is an emergency preamble, requires ratification. Dean J. Mazzarella, Mayor, request an appropriation of $308,000 to the ITTF expense account, same amount to be transferred from the stabilization fund. As indicated, this was passed on October 15th as an emergency preamble, and needs to be ratified by a two-thirds vote. It'd be my position to recommend ratification. I'd ask you to check with members of my committee.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, are you have the floor to the clerk?
I agree.
Thank you, third member.
I also agree.
Thank you, please requalify.
Yeah, Ms. Recommendation of Finance is to ratify C-29.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Counselor, sir, the recommendation read for ratification, our Communication 29. Are there any comments or questions on the floor? If not, this will be a roll call vote, beginning with Counselor David Cormier.
Yay.
Counselor Pauline Cormier.
Yay.
Counselor Ottinger.
Yay.
Counselor Bonanza.
Yay.
Counselor Shalfo Zephyr.
Yay.
Counselor Frida.
Yay.
I shall recite, yay, by a vote of seven to nothing, ratification has taken place, thank you. We now move on to Communication 30, is the Chairman ready to report?
Yes, Mr. President, C-30, Dean J. Mazzarella, Mayor, request an appropriation of $60,000 to various accounts as listed below, same amount to be raised by fiscal year 2020 revenue. RE expenses related to fiscal year 2019 collective bargaining agreement. They are broken down, four categories, collective bargaining, sick leave, buyback, $40,000. Collective bargaining expenses, $14,887. Health and salary wages, $2,766. Economic development salary and wages, $2,347. The first item of $40,000 is to cover the sick leave buyback of two employees, one that has already retired, and one that is about to retire very soon. The second item, $14,887, is to cover the estimated cost of overtime to be paid employees when they are called back for emergency type of matters like snow and ice removal, and also to set up and take down various city-sponsored events. And that money is being requested for that purpose. And then it's Items 3 and 4, health and salary wages, $2,766, and economic development salary and wages, $2,347. This was a miscalculation with respect to implementing the fiscal year 2019 collective bargaining agreement. Apparently, they made the adjustment for the proper level, but not the proper step. So when applying the proper step to these two employees, the wages increased by those amounts. So that's what the $60,000 is made up of. It would be my position, Mr. President, to grant C-30. I'd ask you to check with members of my committee.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, are you have the floor to the clerk?
I agree.
Thank you, third member.
I also agree.
Thank you, please requalify.
Thank you, Mr. President, unanimous recommendation of Finance is to grant C-30.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Counselor, sir, the recommendation read to grant Communication 30. Are there any questions or comments on the floor, Counselor Frida?
Through the Chair, to the Finance Chair, I had asked you to look at some of these the last time. Just because there's so much, and I'm not the only one, I'm sure, getting the questions or the issues in City Hall about the union as opposed to non-union, step increases to some people and not to others. Is that part, I know the economic development, you said, I'm not sure, is that the only one? Or is that the only one applying to this, on the steps?
There's only, these cover two different employees, two different departments, but there's one employee in each case. So what they did is they made a calculation, as I said, and they had the level correct, but not the step correct. So when they apply the appropriate step, this is based on where they ended up falling as a result of the collective bargaining agreement that was just reached. And this is a sort of a readjustment to make it appropriate or make it correct. So that's how that developed.
I just hate seeing the mood in City Hall, just, from what I've heard, it seems to be quite unfair. And it's the union, so I can't do anything about it, I guess, but so much for the union in City Hall, I guess. Thank you.
Yeah, you're okay, I don't know if this was an unintended result of the contract.
Right, right.
But, you know, at the end of the day, they signed the contract, and this is applying the contract to our ordinance, and that's what it results in. So I guess we're stuck with it.
So I guess if you have two or three people in a department, and two people are making a decision, and a third person doesn't get a raise or a step increase, doesn't seem, who makes that determination?
That's what happens in unions sometimes, unfortunately.
That's it. I'll say, Counselor.
Thank you.
Okay, Counselor Shalfo Zephyr, if you have a hand, okay, thank you. Again, are there any other questions on Communication 30? If not, others in favor of granting Communication 30, please indicate in the usual manner. Those opposed by a vote of seven to nothing, communication is granted. Does the Chairman have an order?
Yes, Mr. President, order that the sum of $60,000 be appropriated to the fiscal, to the collective bargaining agreement account, based, to be appropriated from 2020 revenue. Move for the adoption of the order.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Again, Counselor, sir, the recommendation, our Communication 30. One last time, any questions or comments on the floor? If not, others in favor of the recommendation, please indicate by saying yay.
Yay.
Those opposed by a vote of seven to nothing, Communication 30 has been adopted, thank you. We now move under to Communication 31. Is the Chairman ready to report?
Do we have to vote on the suspension of the rules?
No, we already did that.
We did it the first meeting, correct.
Thank you. C-31, Dean J. Mazzarella, Mayor, request an appropriation of $221,000 to the fire department capital alt lay expense account, same amount to be transferred from the stabilization fund regarding the central fire station rear energy reconstruction. The chief has been over here a number of times. We know that the building has a lot of issues, and they're trying to tackle them, I guess, one at a time. They put this out to bid, and there's a contract that they've, they're seeking to award in a sum of $221,100, and thus the request. We all know how important it is to keep that building up to as best as we can and maintain it for those men and women. And it would be my position, Mr. President, to grant C-31, and I'd ask you to check with members of my committee.
Are you have the floor to the clerk?
I agree.
Thank you, third member.
I also agree.
Thank you, please requalify.
Yeah, Ms. Recommendation is to grant C-31.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Counselors, sir, the recommendation read to grant Communication 31. Are there any questions or comments on the floor? If not, others in favor of the recommendation, please indicate in the usual manner. Those opposed by a vote of seven to nothing, the communication has been adopted. Does the Chairman have an order?
Yes, Mr. President, order that the sum of $221,000 be appropriated to the fire department capital alt lay expense account, same amount to be transferred from the stabilization fund. Move for the adoption of the order.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Counselors, sir, that recommendation read, again, are there any questions on the floor? If not, others in favor of adopting the order for Communication 31, please indicate by saying yay.
Yay.
Those opposed by a vote of seven to nothing, the order's been adopted. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, thank you, committee. Counselor Frida, you are the chairperson, the acting chairperson of Legal Affairs. We'll begin with 7-20, take your time.
7-20, Gail Feckley, request to amend Section 13-77, stop signs of the Lummister Municipal Code by adding a stop sign for northbound traffic on Dingly Street at Fairview Street. We were waiting for recommendations, I think we have them all now, right? So I will go to the other member, go to, Mr. President, go to the other member of my committee?
I'm fine with it.
Of the committee?
I'm fine with it.
Good, okay.
And I agree, so the recommendation would be to grant.
Thank you. Counselors, sir, the recommendation read to grant 7-20. Are there any comments or questions on the floor? Do we have to set a hearing on this as well afterward? Right now, at the same time?
We need to establish a hearing.
Can we set the hearing at the same time?
Yeah, I'm sorry.
No, no, that's fine.
Yeah, we need to establish a hearing for 11:12 at 6:32.
Okay, thank you. Counselors, sir, the recommendation read to grant Communication, excuse me, petition 7-20, establish a hearing for 11:12 at 6:32 PM in the council chambers. Are there any questions or comments on the floor?
Nope.
If not, others in favor of the recommendation, please indicate in the usual manner. Those opposed by a vote of seven to nothing, 7-20 has been granted, and the hearing has been established, thank you. We now move on to 8-20, is the Chairwoman ready to report?
I am. 8-20, Gail Feckley, request to amend Section 13-77, stop signs of the Lummister Municipal Code by adding a stop sign for southbound traffic on Dingly Street at Tolman Avenue. Again, I go to the other member of the committee. My recommendation would be to grant.
Thank you, Counselor Bonanza.
I'm in agreement.
Thank you, please requalify with the hearing.
We have a unanimous recommendation. We also need to establish a hearing on 11:12 at 6:34.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor, sir, the recommendation read to grant 8-20, and establish a hearing on 11:12 at 6:34 PM in the council chambers. Are there any comments or questions on the floor? If not, others in favor of the recommendation, please indicate in the usual manner. Those opposed, thank you, by a vote of seven to nothing. Petition 8-20 has been granted with a hearing established, thank you. We now move on to 9-20, is the Chairwoman ready to report?
I am. 9-20, Michael Goldman, Police Chief, request to delete Section 13-22 of the revised ordinance for the City of Lummister, and insert new Section 13-26 as follows. A, whenever the mayor or the mayor's designee declares a snow emergency exist in the city in regard to snow plowing or snow removal, by giving at least six hours' notice, shall be unlawful for the owner, operator, or person in charge of any vehicle other than one acting in an emergency to park such a vehicle, or permit, or suffer the same to be parked on any public street in this city for the duration of the emergency. A snow emergency so declared shall continue for a 48-hour period, which may be extended by the mayor of his or her designee, as circumstances require. During said snow emergency, the Director of Public Works shall conduct snow plowing, removal, and sand and salt operations. B, the mayor or the mayor's designee may remove the restrictions imposed in any snow emergency for areas of the city as they become cleared. C, the Director of Public Works shall notify the Lummister Police Department, activate Code Red, and announce the snow emergency through TV, radio, newspaper, and city's social media outlets, and as many other public channels as the Director deems necessary. D, the provisions of this section shall not apply to handicapped parking areas located in residential zones. E, any vehicle found in violation of this section may be removed to a convenient place under the direction of an officer of the police department, and the owner of the vehicle so removed or towed away shall be liable to the cost of such removal and storage. I believe we have all the recommendations in on this as well. So the recommendation, my recommendation would be to grant, and I will go to the other member of the committee.
Thank you, Counselor Bonanza.
That is mine as well.
Thank you, please requalify.
Yes, Mr. President, we have unanimous recommendation to support 9-20.
And can we establish a hearing?
We need to establish a hearing at 11:12 at 6:36.
Thank you. Counselors, sir, the recommendation read to grant petition 9-20, and establish a hearing on 11:12 at 6:30, 6:00 PM in the council chambers. Are there any comments or questions on the floor? If not, others in favor of the recommendation, please indicate in the usual manner. Those opposed by a vote of seven to nothing, 9-20 has been granted. I just want to caution the community, this is work in progress. As we all know, this is not the law. So we have to have a hearing, we have to have a first and second reading. There's a 21-day appeal period, so the new ordinance that we're very grateful to the chief for submitting to us to go through this process will not go into effect until the end of December. So the old one is in effect. If there's any confusion, please call the mayor's office, thank you. We now move on to 11-20, is the Chairwoman ready to report?
I am. 11-20, Claire Frida, request to amend Section 13-77, stop signs of the Lummister Municipal Code by adding three stop signs for the following locations. Barry Lane at the intersection of Barry Lane and Debbie Drive, Barry Lane at the intersection of Barry Lane and Beth Avenue, and Jay Avenue at the intersection of Jay Avenue and Debbie Drive. I believe all the recommendations are in on this as well. So I'll go to the other member of the committee.
I'm in accord.
Thank you, please requalify.
Then we have unanimous recommendation to support 11-20. Need to establish a hearing on 11:12 at 6:38.
Thank you. Counselors, sir, the recommendation read to grant 11-20, and to establish a hearing on 11:12 at 6:38 PM in the council chambers. Are there any questions or comments on the floor? If not, others in favor, please indicate in the usual manner. Those opposed by a vote of seven to nothing, 11-20 has been established with the hearing date as well, thank you. Counselor, you're busy tonight. We're now going to, we're not going to move on to Ways and Means.
Have a minute to change my hat, please.
You just have to turn it the other way now. So you are now the acting Chairwoman of Ways and Means.
All right.
We have Communication 28, are you ready to report? Take your time.
I am. C-28, Mayor Dean J. Mazzarella, request that Kevin Einakoni be exempt from the provisions of Mass General Law, Chapter 268A, 20B, Conflict of Interest. I believe we have all the recommendations in on this as well. Okay, I'm in support, I'll go to the other member of the committee, who is?
They're not here.
Neither of them here, okay.
Both, sir.
Good, I feel powerful now.
It's the foolish.
Our recommendation is to grant.
Are you sure now?
To confirm the point.
You don't have a debate within your committee on that one? Councilor, the recommendation read to grant communication twenty-eight. Are there any comments or questions on the floor? If not, all those in favor of the recommendation to grant, please indicate in the usual manner. Those opposed by a vote of seven to nothing, it is granted. Thank you very much. We now move back to public service, thirteen dash twenty. Is the chairwoman ready to report?
I am.
I never want to hear you say to me, ever, that you weren't on enough committees while I was council president.
I don't think I ever said that. Thirteen dash twenty. National Grid in Verizon, New England Incorporated. Union Street, request to install one jointly owned pole on Union Street beginning at a point approximately two hundred and fifty feet west of the center line, the intersection of Theodore Drive, and continuing approximately twenty feet in a northern direction. Install new pole number ninety-eight dash fifty at entrance of driveway to eight twenty-seven Union Street to service new pole line running up driveway and remove backyard poles from house number eight twenty-one that service number eight twenty-seven. We have all the recommendations in, I believe, and we heard the representative from National Grid tonight. So I'll go to the other member. Do we have somebody else?
No, but before you do, I'm gonna yield the floor to Councilor Cormier.
We do have a conflict. I can't vote on this. It's usually partially owned by my employer. Thank you.
Duly noted, thank you. So Councilor Ottinger, you can go to him if you want.
Okay.
I concur.
Okay, so the recommendation.
The bullpen is empty.
The recommendation is to grant.
Thank you. Councilor, the recommendation read to grant thirteen dash twenty. Are there any comments or questions on the floor? If not, all those in favor of the recommendation, please indicate in the usual manner. Those opposed by a vote of six to nothing, thirteen dash twenty has been granted. Thank you. We now move on to city property, twelve dash twenty. Mr. Chairman, are you ready to report?
Yes, I am. Thank you, Mr. President. Before I report, though, I'd like to just note that the festival, festival facilitator has done a great job with this program. I don't know who that may be, but he's done a great job.
We do the best we can. My volunteers put up with me.
Okay. Petition twelve dash twenty. Richard M. Marshan, festival facilitator, requested the, request the closure of the following streets. Five thirty A M. to seven P M. for the annual Johnny Appleseed Arts and Cultural Festival on Saturday, September twenty-six, twenty twenty, with a rain date of Sunday, October third, twenty twenty.
Saturday.
Saturday, I'm sorry, Saturday. Okay, I can't read. And it's West Street from School Street to Main Street. Park Street from West Street to the intersection of Church Street vicinity of Main Street. The City Hall parking lot. The city parking lot adjacent to the City Hall located off West Street. The city parking lot defined spaces located between the First Baptist Church and the First Church Unitarian for Handicapped Parking. Church Street from Miriam Avenue to West Street. The section of Church Street to be closed off is still available with an altered egress pattern for public safety and safety vehicles in business. My recommendation is to grant twelve dash twenty, but I ask you to poll the committee.
Thank you, Council Bonanza.
I'm in favor.
Thank you, Council Shalfo Zephyr.
I agree as well.
Thank you, please requalify.
The unanimous recommendation is to grant petition twelve dash twenty.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Councilor, the recommendation read to grant communication twelve dash twenty. Are there any other comments or questions on the floor? If not, all those in favor of the recommendation, please indicate in the usual manner. Those opposed by a vote of seven to nothing, twelve twenty has been granted. Thank you very much. We now move on to new business. We don't have anything listed here. Nothing under old business.
I just have a quick, very quick item.
Okay, under new?
Old.
Okay, old.
At the last meeting, I had asked the chairman of Legal Affairs if he could get in contact with the city clerk. I believe that there's a petition in the legal affairs tabled folder for a stop sign at J. Ave, at Beth Ave. And there was an issue back then where we tabled it because it was an accepted street, and we since got a legal, a legal opinion about, you know, all that. So I just wanted it to be taken off the table and added to these other petitions, but it didn't happen. If you could just call him tomorrow, get his blessing to have it put on the next agenda, that'd be great.
And also, thank you, thank you. That also reminds us that there are outstanding tabled petitions. Not all of you have one in your chairmanship or chairwomanship folder, but if you can check with the clerk and see if maybe this is a good time of the year to get rid of a few of them if we can. Just to clean out the folder for the new session coming up. All right? Thank you. Councilor Frida?
Yeah, through the chair, just to the ward three, Councilor. There's another one or two here that are on unaccepted streets as well. But I was taking the lead from Councilor Bonanza, who felt there was a safety issue, which there is, since everybody's cutting into after the light, I'm willing, so.
Right, right.
Okay, thank you very much for bringing that up.
Thank you.
Anything else on the old business? Community calendar, I want to just take a couple of minutes. We're doing very well here tonight. But I want to make sure that I share with you what I'm getting from, I stop in the veterans' office on occasion, and I receive some other information, but I also want to share with you. This past Saturday, Lummester High School had their homecoming. And the student council approached the administration a couple of weeks ago, and they asked them if they could have a dance at the high school. And it would be a semi-formal. And reluctantly, you know, and when you take a look at the research on high school dances, that sometimes can be a problem, to the point where most schools in the Commonwealth have gone away from it altogether. They have proms, and that's about it. And so with the respect of the new administration at the high school, they worked with the student council, and for the first time in twenty-two years, they had a dance for homecoming. They didn't have one incident. Five hundred and fifty Lummester High School students attended. Isn't that amazing? So, you know, we often hear about kids and teenagers, and it's a scary world and everything, but boy, they really stepped up big time. But not only did they have a great dance on Friday night, Doyle Field was a great celebration all day Saturday. They started off with a football game in the morning for the younger team, I think it was the freshman team. It moved into a varsity field hockey game. And then they had a varsity girls' game for soccer simultaneously, the JVs playing up top. Then they had the boys' varsity down below simultaneously with the JV up top, followed by a great evening of a football game and a real tough competition. The kids played great. And there wasn't an issue at the beginning of the game, and there wasn't an issue well after the game. So congratulations to the Lummester Public Schools for having these kids and raising them and helping the families, and congratulations to the kids for really stepping up, so we appreciate that. We also have Veterans Day coming up, and it's actually not just one day of ceremony, but I, I mentioned to Jolene today that I would share this. On Saturday, the eleventh, excuse me, November second, there's a Vet Together Holiday Fundraiser hosted by the Blue Star Mothers at the Monument Tap at six P M. On Thursday, November seventh, Veterans Day, Council, would you like to read this? Go, wife, would you like to read this? Okay, it's yours, yeah. Out of respect.
I'll start from the beginning. Veterans Day events and ceremonies for the month of November. Saturday, eleven two nineteen, Vets Together Holiday Fundraiser hosted by the Blue Star Mothers, Chapter One, six o'clock at the Monument Tap. And for anybody who doesn't know, Blue Star Mothers are all mothers who have children or grandchildren or nieces or nephews in the military presently, hoping to never turn to a Gold Star. Thursday, eleven seven nineteen, Veterans Day Concert. LHS Band and International Veterans Choir. Six o'clock, Lummester High School Auditorium, one twenty-two Granite Street. Eleven nine on a Saturday, Veterans Breakfast, eight o'clock, Charles Moore Lodge, sixteen Thorndike Street in Fitchburg, hosted by the IC Credit Union. Sunday, eleven ten nineteen, Veterans Day Rifle and Pistol Match. Nine o'clock, Lummester Sportsman's Club, fourteen fifty-five Allen Street. Monday, eleven eleven nineteen, Veterans Day, ten thirty, Memorial Reef Lane, Monument Square, eleven o'clock, Ceremony Inside Lummester City Hall. Tuesday, eleven twelve nineteen, Summit Eldercare. Eleven o'clock, Veteran Recognition Presentation, fifty-five Cinema Boulevard, Lummester. Wednesday, eleven thirteen nineteen, Veterans Breakfast, eleven, eight thirty to ten. Lummester Veterans Center, free and open to all veterans and first responders. R S V P by eleven seven, with the phone nine seven eight five three four seven five three eight. Wednesday, eleven thirteen nineteen, Veterans Luncheon, eleven thirty. Sterling Senior Center, thirty-six Muddy Pond Road. Reservations are required. Call nine seven eight four two two three oh three two. Wednesday, eleven thirteen nineteen, Salvation Army Veterans Dinner. Back where we started, free, five to seven thirty, Devon's Common Center, thirty-one Andrews Parkway, Devon's. R S V P by eleven two nine seventy-eight three four two dash three three zero zero. And Sunday, eleven twenty-four, Rotary Club Breakfast with the Bands, eight o'clock, Lummester High School Cafeteria.
How long have you been doing that now?
Twenty, I think we're close to twenty-six or twenty-seven.
Twenty-six she is. We're at Lummester this year?
Yes, we are.
That feels great.
Yep.
And the band, the band will be there, I'm sure. And how much money, how much money have you raised for the bands over there as a ballpark?
Over a hundred thousand, I think.
It's amazing. It's awesome, isn't it? Yeah. Our band, by the way, has already engaged in a new fundraising activity. And they're, they're looking to get new uniforms. They need them badly, and they also have an expanding band, so something to be thinking about if you're looking to, you know, support the band, go to the breakfast, make donations. It's a, it's a great morning, so thank you very much for doing that.
Can I just add a couple more here that I'm aware of? Sammlet School has a lunch. Francine Meggs has been doing that for a number of years now for children that take their veteran parent or grandparent to the luncheon. That's Friday, the eighth, I think, at eleven thirty.
Right.
And Sanian School also has a tribute to veterans at nine thirty, I believe, in the morning at Sanian School.
That's awesome. Thank you. Well, thank you very much. Okay, the meeting, Councilor Ottinger, go ahead.
One comment. The Salvation Army meal at Devon's is open not only to veterans, but their spouses or relatives. They want a good crowd there, so.
Great.
I would encourage you, bring everybody.
Where they eating there, Frank?
At Devon's Common. What's the name of the restaurant again? It's on the sheet. I apologize. I don't recall.
Devon's Grill, the, right on the corner.
Yeah.
Yeah, great. Thank you. Council Bonanza?
Yeah, I will be at the Drake House this Saturday from one to four, doing tours, opening it up to the public, free of charge. And then a more expanded event on December fourteenth, which is, we're gonna repeat what we did last year. Call it the Holiday Open House with the Drake House. Same hours, one to four, but in that case, the mayor will be there roasting chestnuts. And we'll have coffee and desserts and things like that available as well.
Awesome. Thank you. Anything else? How's Jenny's doing? You gearing up for Thanksgiving?
We are. We already have almost four hundred signups for Thanksgiving and Christmas holiday food baskets. So we're very, very busy. So we're looking for volunteers. Anybody wants to come down and help us fill those baskets and also donations. So if anybody wants to donate turkeys or any of the other ingredients that go into preparing a nice holiday meal, we're down there, Tuesday through Saturday.
Great. Thank you very much. Council Frida?
Just to add, Councilor reminded me about a week and a half ago now, the Catholic Charities opened and did the ribbon cutting for a new, unfortunately necessary transition home for drug and alcohol addicted women, which there is nothing around the area. So it'd be a first, and it was a grant, and they have a very successful men's program in Worcester, and they've been doing it for a number of years, so I would expect same director is dealing with it. I've been on the corporate board for a number of years. And it's, again, unfortunate that we need it, but it's good that we have it.
Awesome. Thank you very much. Thank you. All set? The meeting's over. Thank you. Have a nice evening. Enjoy Monday Night Football.